Tom Meyer.
Here.
Eastling.
Here.
Link Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Hey, we'll start with this input.
You want a meeting minutes? Minutes?
That's part of consent agenda, Karen.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Please.
Miller.
Hi.
Rice.
Hi.
Tom Meyer.
Hi.
Eastling.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Hi.
Okay, first new business item is resolution forty-three twenty-two-five, resolution to fix the date for public hearing on the golf course leasing purchase agreement. Principal amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand.
We make that get into the motion, do we want to have a discussion about whether we're going to do the carts? Um, other, because if, if we're not, then the, the point of a, of a meeting would be moved, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I would agree.
Just, I just saw, we might as well, and Jeremy's here, we might as well have that.
I assume you want some discussion.
Just maybe a little, little bit about the background, is it a three-year lease, four-year lease, lease purchase? Do we have it with windshields, without windshield?
We have, um, we have, or I have submitted a, a recommendation. That recommendation is going to be for a four-year lease with the dollar buyout at the end, similar to the terms that we have run with our last two fleets. They, I did ask for an alternate pricing on a couple of different items, windshields being one of them. I am recommending that you add the windshields, uh, but I also took, um, some of the things that I felt were maybe some cost-saving measures like wheel covers, exterior carts, where we can have some cost-saving there to help.
Remind me again, um, the last time we had the carts, we kept them for how many years?
They are twenty-eighteens. So we got them in twenty, we got them in twenty-eighteen, so we ran them eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, six.
Okay, and then the, the ones before this, we, we got, we held for eight?
Held for eight, which was theoretically a little bit too long. Um, some differences in those two fleets. First of all, current fleet has actually seen more, our rounds numbers have been up, as everyone knows golf, especially since COVID has been pretty popular. So play has been up, rounds usage has been up, revenue's been up with that. COVID kind of threw us for a loop there for about three-quarters of a year also when we were doing single rider carts. So for every, instead of like foursome, instead of two carts going out, you sent out four. So we doubled the usage there for that year.
That was in the, that was in this current six-year?
Yeah.
Yes, current six-year cycle, right?
That's this current fleet, correct.
Thank you.
I, I've got a question, you have a not to exceed price of one-eighty-five?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, with the, the windshield and the other stuff that you're looking for, is that going to comfortably, comfortably fit within that one-eighty-five?
I believe so, yeah, I have not looked at this document that I wrote in a few weeks, so I want to say yes, it fits in there.
The reason I ask Jeremy is, if, if memory serves correctly, so many years ago, six years ago, eight years ago, we, we were spending like a hundred and sixty for the fleet then, if I'm not mistaken. Am I getting that wrong?
Our, our last, or our current fleet, we're spending, I believe, just under thirty-two thousand dollars a month, six months a year.
Okay.
We were spent.
No, that's about thirty-one thousand.
Mathematically, no, no.
That is incorrect, that sounds horrible.
Mathematically, no.
Yeah. We got a terrible deal on that currently.
No, um, it was thirty-two thousand a year, I'm sorry. That number was then divided by six. Uh, we made payments in April, May, June, July, September, October.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the, the one-eighty-five is going to cover all the bells and whistles that you're looking for.
I believe it should, yes.
Thank you.
You don't think we can get by another year?
I think looking at the delta between the decrease in our big trade-in value of our current fleet, which we're getting a very good, on, on the bid that we are, that I'm recommending that we accept, we're getting a very good trade-in value on our current, current fleet. That value obviously would decrease if we would run the fleet another year. Um, you would also have a price increase from this model year to next if we waited another year, so we're going to see some increase on the expense side there as well. And then we're also going to anticipate that, I mean, our repair costs are going to go up for another year as well, so if we can, you know, we can keep this fleet going in a reasonable manner here for, through June, and then make a switch.
Either, I don't see, was, was your recommendation in the last package or is it this?
I don't know where it is.
Okay, so let's bring that up, because all your answers are in there, the cost, the difference, what it's going to cost to keep it longer.
And I don't know, I, I, quite frankly, I don't know that you have seen that, I submit.
They haven't, that's why, and I don't know that, I mean, to set the date, fine, but Russ's point's a good idea to have some discussion whether this is totally dead issue or you certainly are interested. Want to highlight that?
Well, she's pulling that up, um, Jeremy, is, is the game plan then if you replace them to, to swap them out like in July? Or we're going to carry them through the summer and swallow them out at the beginning of the next spring?
Swap them in July.
So it's the July ones, we're already, you know, going to be, but the, the cost difference between renewing this year and next year is how much?
I would look at.
But the, the, it would be two different model years then, right?
Correct.
Fifty thousand nine hundred would be at twenty-twenty-five?
The fifty thousand nine hundred is a twenty-twenty-five, I'm sorry, yes.
Right, and then?
And then that fifty-five thousand oh-two, twenty-nine is a twenty-six.
It's going to cost you five thousand a year more to wait.
Yeah.
What plus did the value go down in?
Right.
Going to have increased maintenance.
Yep. So it's twenty and even, just, or being quick right there, it's a twenty thousand dollar increase to wait another year, just in cart fleet costs.
I, I guess where I'm at is just, if the previous ones went eight, this one's at six. If we split the difference and push this out one more year, oh, the only reason I'm looking at is, is just to try to help the financials out a little bit, because we did have to incur extra costs because of the, at the bar staff, the extra, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to make up and make up a little bit of difference on some of the money that we spend.
I don't, I don't feel that time of ownership is the proper measuring stick, it's rounds, how many times did they go out, it's usage.
Do you track the hours on the carts?
No, they do not have an hours meter. This current fleet, yeah, this current fleet with six years of use has gone out more than the fleet of eight.
And there's no guarantee of what the price is going to be if we wait.
Correct, this is just, like, this is what we were quoted now, you know, whatever happens with tariffs or whatever else, I mean, we don't know what that price is going to be when we actually go to bid next year. This is just what they felt, building in a whatever percentage increase of sale.
That's an estimate for next year.
I'm sorry?
That's an estimate for next year.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
That's all, that's the only information. And obviously anything would be like formal unless it was a, like a bid bid.
These are fuel-injected, more reliable mileage-wise, any better?
Yeah, increased, increased fuel mileage, yeah. Right, we're working with carbureted right now, so well, fuel injection.
So the prices up there with or without windshields?
These, those are the base without.
Okay.
There's an alternate that I recommend to get, uh, to get the windshields where you're looking at, it's an additional two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars a month or one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars annually.
Are they safe? Right now?
Are the carts safe?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we're not going to operate them at a liability.
Yeah, I mean, you, they get a problem, you fix them.
Correct.
How much maintenance have you had to do on the carts this year?
Well, and that's kind of the driving force behind why we're looking at this, it's, we're, you know, kind of like we had talked about in the budget session, we're looking at tires are needing to be replaced, batteries are needing to be replaced, alternators are needing to be replaced, so we're kind of at that point where that useful life, it's like all of a sudden, and what we see typically is, we do a very good job of rotating our carts, um, so when we see that one of them starts to go, typically they all go.
When, when did the two thousand twenty-six mock carts become available?
I, I do not know.
I just, I didn't know if it's switched like cars or if it's just a year, I didn't know. All right.
Is there enough support to at least set the date for the public hearing?
Um, I'll make a motion to set the date for public hearing. We have a date?
Yeah, March twenty-fifth, I believe.
Okay.
March twenty-fifth, right?
And if you have not been provided a copy of the document that Beth is showing.
It'll be in the package.
We can, can get that to you, and it's pretty detailed.
Actually, if you go out and look at the draft for the next meeting, it's already out there, that's where I pulled it up from, from here.
If, Beth, let me ask one last question, then I think, isn't our, is our budget approval, uh, the next meeting also, so?
No, budget, what's, what's for the next meet, or for the next meeting, what's approved is to approve the levy, then we're setting the date for the public hearing for the budget, so the budget approval is still another meeting out.
So, so if we decided, if, if for some reason that we didn't do it, we could still knock the sixty-one thousand dollars out of the budget yet? Because it's in there right now, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't believe I have a second yet.
Second.
Yeah, I was waiting for everybody to finish.
All right, motion to second, set a date for public hearing for March twenty-fifth, seven P M. A roll, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Rice.
Hi.
Tom Meyer.
Nay.
Eastling.
Hi.
Link Hammer.
Nay.
Okay. Well, we can move on to the next item, it's just a draft ordinance. Back down on this, yes, please.
Draft or, on the cart?
Yeah.
Yep, so this is kind of the next step in a plan that was put in place actually back close to when the city purchased the meadows. This is a connection of a trail to allow the residents of Tuscany and Legacy, uh, and people on the, what would be the west side of Hidden Meadows, access to the golf course, where they could have, uh, an own, operate a private cart, bring that on property, similar to what is currently in place with, but, but, um, you know, way back when, when the Wedgwood bit was written, um, the chief of police team, his, his main concern was to keep cart traffic off of Asbury Road, which is why we had kind of limited, uh, those spots, I guess, that was, those were really the only two places that you could get to on the meadows without getting on Asbury, which was the Wedgwood neighborhood, and then Clover Lane, and then the residences on the east side of, uh, Hidden Meadow. We kind of sat on it because Legacy and Tuscany, quite frankly, weren't developed enough to, to, uh, really pursue it a lot, there weren't a lot of homes up there. Uh, as that neighborhood has progressed to or continued to grow, um, and we, when we purchased the lot at the bottom of Hidden Meadow, uh, we, we replatted that lot to allow specifically foreign easement for cart traffic for some time in the future, which, you know, we kind of feel is right now, as that neighborhood has continued to grow. So it's been a nice, the Wedgwood portion has been very successful for us, we, you know, we started that because membership was shockingly low for some people that lived in very, very close proximity to the, our facility. We sold, uh, we charge a trail fee, uh, for someone to do that, it's four-hundred-and-fifty bucks for them to bring their own cart out there every year, we sold twenty-two of those last year. You're also required to be a member, so there's obviously some larger upside on the, on the revenue piece there, so this is just, call it phase two, or whatever you want to call it, for some private cart access onto the meadows to hopefully increase our membership base.
So, so there's no, no residents out there that have requested this, this is just a marketing attempt to get more people?
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, I haven't had any, I've had people that have heard about it that have said, I'll join tomorrow for passes, um, that are currently not members, but I didn't have anyone come knocking on my door, it's just been a plan that we've had in place since oh-nine.
The other part of this would require them going over a county road, currently county?
That is currently county road.
Yeah, so I can address that, there is, on the package, there's seven-hundred-and-eighty-five feet that is in the county. Technically, they could come to the meadows safely, because they would be only traversing the city of Asbury streets, but on the return home, they would actually have to go into the county for roughly eight-hundred feet, that would be the north side of Bud Road, from whatever. So we talked to the county chief, did, and like, well, of course, we're allowing county roads, would they come and enforce it? No, but would we sell a cart path and then tell them, oh, by the way, you can't legally take it home or drive on the wrong side of the street? So in discussion with the county, the only way we could come up with this was just the city to annex that eight-hundred feet of road, so the entire road would be in the city of Asbury. Cart pass holders could legally traverse either direction to and from the meadows without. For the homeowners, I believe there's two, Beth, correct me, that are along there, does not change them, their addresses, their, their taxing authority, everything stays the same, this is the precedent in the county, they've done that. So it doesn't change them one bit.
So we wouldn't be getting any more, any more property other than the road into this city for that annexation?
Right, we, we already filed that portion of the road.
Eight-hundred feet of road.
Yeah, so, and it was just Millenoverlaid the last two years, so it's probably good for fifteen or more. So yes, you would assume maintenance of the eight-hundred feet of road, but relative to the thirty-two-point-one miles we have in the city, I don't know if it's significant or irrelevant, that's the bottom line, in order for us to offer these passes, we do need to annex that portion of the road, we thought, that's the only way we can find to get around it, the county is not going to grant an exception or look the other way, whatever you want to say it, it's on us to get that road into the city if we're going to, or put a cart pass, path in on the other side, it, it just doesn't make sense, there's no way to do it other than us taking ownership of the road, we're already basically maintaining it.
Right. When, when you guys did this for Wedgwood, didn't you survey, did you tell me, Jeremy, that you surveyed the residents and?
I think it was part of an initial meadow survey that we had done early on, um, that that was some overwhelming, like this is what, you know, this is what they were looking for.
I, I guess my, my personal opinion is, I would prefer not to have golf carts on any streets in Asbury, I don't see it any different than ATV, UTVs, and I think that, I don't think they're, they're any safer, um, and I don't know how that, we would, we'd, we'd look at our ATV, UTV, um, people that are interested and say, well, we can allow golf carts, but we can't allow ATV, UTVs, so my opinion is that we shouldn't do this, the people that built out there weren't promised any, any access to the golf course, I mean, it's, it's, and it's a lot further away than what Wedgwood is. They're going to be driving on city streets a lot more, which, which I, I just don't think they're, you know, car meeting, a car meeting a golf cart would be a disaster on a city street. Even the, golf carts are going twelve miles an hour, which is what the ordinance says, they can't go more than twelve miles an hour, so car versus golf cart.
Golf cart does not win that battle, you're.
So I'm, I'm not in favor of doing that.
The others, anybody have? Do you want to bring it back for formal, formal reading and/or passage?
Jim, I'd like to see if we get the annexation before we, uh, go ahead with this, only because if we can't get that, it seems a moot point, we're making people drive the wrong way.
I agree, Bob, it's a chicken or egg thing, we didn't want to go through the annexation process without having support of council, but, yeah, we can certainly go through that, but I, again, which is first, we could preliminary put that document in front of the county with their approval, but why would we sign it until the, the council signed off, right? Why would we take ownership and maintenance of something that has no value to us? We can get it, we can, we can get assurance for, for the council that, that the county will allow the annex and annexation into the city, but if you want a formal agreement, I, I caution you that you're taking something that has no value unless you're going to pass this ordinance.
What, what's the annex, what's the annexation going to cost us to have done? Legally, get all the paperwork done? And lawyers fees?
Couple hours, I mean, there's not much to it.
Before it gets, before it gets approved officially, it'll probably, you know, two to three months.
So basically the golf season will be over by the time that would be done?
It'd be, yeah.
Tom, what do you think about golf carts on city streets?
Well, I've talked to Jeremy about this, and, uh, it's kind of a gray area where, you know, I don't like them traveling all the way from sundown, but it, it is more consistent with what we're doing with letting them come from Wedgwood. I was more concerned about the accessibility getting to the golf course, and Jeremy answered all my questions to my satisfaction.
Question, uh, historically, we haven't had many issues with the golf carts out in Wedgwood or around town, I've, Karen brought up the first time I've even heard of golf cart. The line of sight out there, pretty wide open, I think cars should see golf carts or anything coming on the roadways. Speed limits are twenty-five miles an hour out there, pretty, going to be a pretty safe area, that's my thoughts, it's going to be direct line to and to the golf carts. Most people that would be operating those, uh, coming here for their right purposes.
So let me ask you this, if there's other areas in the city then that decide they want to have access to the golf course, because Arrowhead out there, there's going to, if there's going to be a trail between Arrowhead and Wedgwood, now do you, now do you allow them to go?
That could be guys' decision.
If you want.
That would be a good use of it as well.
If, if you want golf cart traffic with pedestrian, yes.
At this particular point in time, everything that we have has a, a adjoining property line with the golf course, th- this area here has, it butts up against the golf course, so.
No, 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 it doesn't. Not Tuscany, that, that, none of that.
Neither does Palmer Drive, so where do you want to split the hair?
Yeah, I know, right, this, this is what I'm saying.
The point is, they can, they can get to the golf course without getting on.
That's what I'm.
Asbury Road.
Exactly.
Right.
So I'm, I'm inclined to go ahead with this, and, uh, to Bob's point though, uh, I guess I would like to have something, you can't have something in, in writing, obviously, but.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would want, I would want to hear from the county that they say, yeah, yeah, we're, we could, we could do this for you before we.
Yeah, we have a verbal.
We've run this by the county, and they are, um, they, they, they won't, if we take it before them, they, they are in favor of doing this.
Okay.
But my concern is that I want to make sure before we move through to annex the roadway, that we go to pass this ordinance, the ordinance gets passed, because otherwise it's, you know, kind of futile to, you know, to annex that portion and, you know, then deny the ordinance.
So to, to Jim's point then, we're chicken and the egg, and we need to say we want to move forward and, and then go with annexation, is that what I'm hearing?
Choosing another foot, I would give away every street in the city, take over ownership, plow them, rebuild them, whoever you want, we'll keep the tax money, right? I mean, why would they not give up eight-hundred feet? It, it's, it's a liability to them, it's a bit of a liability to us, but the upside then would be potentially membership and cart passes and.
Is that, is that six-hundred feet on an E twenty, whatever agreement for plowing?
One-eighty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the next question, sorry.
I mean, there's an agreement with the county to plow it. Right? The other thing too, if you want to get chicken before the egg, is should we, we don't have any commitment from anybody out there, or any push from anybody out there that they even want this.
Uh, according to Jeremy, he has had interest in people saying, yeah, they would sign up tomorrow, if there's more than one, I'm, I'm on board with it.
Well, I would take a stance on this like I did with the ATVs, if we were going to make them go through a part of the, that wasn't the city to get to our city, I wouldn't support it, and I would feel the same with this, I have to have that continuity coming into our city, from our city, not going out in the county, before I would support it.
I, I'm not quite tracking with you, Bob, are you saying that?
Well, you're talking chicken and egg, I guess the chicken is, I want the, the properties in question to be in the city of Asbury, to get access for them to drive through there.
We'll, we'll get a, we'll get a memorandum of understanding or, or something formally from the county that says if you proceed and you modify the ordinance, you would like to annex seven-hundred-and-eighty feet on the north side of Bud Road into the city of Asbury, they're okay with it, if that's good enough, fine, if you want to annex it and then, then hope the ordinance passed, I guess that's entirely up to you. I'm saying.
That would be great, I'm just trying to be consistent in what I'm telling people, Jim.
Yeah, I'm just back to, why would the county care? I mean, I would.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they want, but if Tom's doing his job, and he's arresting them for not being in the city on their golf carts, where the county is, then we're wrong. This way, we're right with having them access, so let's get the access first.
Let me, let me take that one one step further then, if, if some way, shape, or form, um, the ATVs and UTVs are approved, are you going to try to annex, uh, the road between Maple Hills and Cyple Road, because that city, I mean, that's city of Dubuque, so, so they can't, they can't legally drive on that road, period, if, if they come in.
Right, but we're not selling them an ATV and telling them to go drive illegally, we're, we're trying to sell them a pass to the meadows and give them a place that they can actually drive, but it's not the same thing.
Yeah.
If I sold them an ATV and said, you can't drive here and here, I'd say, you're right, it's not the same thing.
My feeling is, I voted against the ATV, UTV, I don't think it's fair to vote for a golf carts to go roaming around the city either.
Point is, is well-taken, but we're already doing it for the Wedgwood community.
Do you want to rescind that?
You want to rescind that?
Yeah, I know, I get it, but.
Want to rescind that?
No, I.
Well, the, the difference Karen is, we.
I get it, but we never had the ATV, UTV years ago either, issue.
You've had any chance in the last, so, so years to say, let's, let's, let's bring it forward, let's rescind that ordinance, and let's, let's stop allowing people to drive in the meadows.
Right, and the reason it hasn't come up is because there hasn't been any problem with it, I don't think there's going to be a problem here.
So.
Yeah.
So would you, would you allow ATVs and UTVs to arrive in those same streets, since you're already allowing golf courts? If you, I mean, that's, that's the other question.
Well, that is a discussion for another time, but I.
You know where I'm at with ATVs, but thirty-five miles an hour to drive anytime you want on any street versus twelve miles an hour between your home and the golf course, again, I, I believe ATVs should be legal, but I, I, UTVs, I don't see they're the same thing, they're just not even close to the same thing. I mean, we, everybody's worried about noise and killing people, right? That was one of the big arguments, you're going to hit pedestrians. Well, I don't think that, I, if you have that concern with golf carts, then let's, let's get rid of it in Wedgwood right now, if the noise and the safety and the pedestrians are at risk, you should rescind that ordinance immediately.
Those were not my concerns.
That's what was coming up in front of here, you're concerned, I, I don't.
Not hitting pedestrians, was, you don't put words in my mouth, okay?
I did not put words in your mouth, I said what was said at the podium. I did not put words in your mouth. I said what was said at the podium. I did not say Russ, Russ Domeyer said. I said what was, what the issues were.
I, I think at the end of the day, um, I certainly, and I talked to, I talked to, earlier today, and I talked to Bob earlier today, they had some questions related to this, and. I know that we're trying to maintain some consistency throughout the city as far as, um. Golf cart versus UTV, ATV. You could make the same argument that we're trying to maintain some consistency throughout the city, as we do have a neighborhood on the eastern side of the property that has access, and then now we have a neighborhood on the western side. That technically has access. There's, there is a route for them to, to enter onto the golf course safely. Cause again, the, the determining factor for that was the usage of Asbury Road, which, you know, this, this does not allow. For trap, golf cart traffic on Asbury Road, so. I certainly see it both ways. Like, as, as the operator of the meadows. Would I tell you that there's been a significant financial gain from the Wedgwood portion of that? Absolutely. Absolutely. It's, it's, and it's not measured in thousands of dollars. It's measured in tens of thousands of dollars, and it's annually.
I didn't, I mean, it's.
I didn't force for this.
It's a number, yeah. So I, so I could sit here and argue with people.
Right.
I don't drive in that subdivision. I'll never live in that subdivision. I'll never be on a cart in that subdivision. We have a fiscal responsibility to the meadows, and I see a demographic, a large number of homes fit who we would want at the meadows.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm just trying to increase the customer base.
Yep. If they absolutely fit our targeted customer profile, without a doubt.
Yeah, I'm not here because I have a golf cart and want to drive in the meadow. I'm looking at the bottom line of the meadows, ultimately, the bottom line of the residence, so if. This isn't a personal vendetta. I'm just doing what we try to do every day, is value for the taxpayer dollar.
And this is not, and again, this is kind of like I stated earlier, this is not a new idea, project. This is, this is a, an idea that was put into place. When we bought Lot Nine and replatted it. I mean, we bought Lot Nine, I believe, almost, was it right after we bought the meadows, or we, almost immediately after? That's two thousand and eight. So we've had, I mean, this has been, you could go back and look and see when that lot was, now that cart path, but, cause this isn't something that's new.
So now my question is, um. Given that we have a draft here, do, do we need to, uh, what's, what's our next step here? Now, I understand that Bob wants.
Well, the next step is, if, I can put it on the agenda. I don't need anybody to ask me to do it. I don't play games with the agenda. If one council member asks me to put this on the agenda, I will. Per our policy, if two ask, I am obligated to. If I refuse to put it on the agenda, and someone comes up here and says, I want, want you guys to talk about it, I am not suppressing someone's opinion or someone, I don't suppress things from being on the agenda. So if, if, if consensus or across the board, nobody wants to talk about this, I'm done. I'm good, I'm cool. You know, we'll just pass on the, that revenue and move on. So whatever you guys want to do. But I, I will only put it on the, if I, and I've been told I'm not allowed to make a decision whether I feel there's, there's support for, for an issue. But I do feel I have that, that right to do so and responsibility, and if I continue to suppress. An issue, that doesn't mean somebody can't come to the podium and address the five of you, or pick up the phone or email you. I could bring up the ATV ordinance every damn place a month if I wanted to. I don't do it. Why don't I do it? Because it's not gonna pass. So I do have to make a judgment call, but no way does that stop the citizens from giving their opinion on what you want them to hear, or they want you to hear. So to answer your question, Kurt, whatever you guys want to do. I'm just putting an, an income or a revenue stream in front of you, and if you want to do it, great. If not, it's no headache for me. It's less headache, less headache for the chief, not that we have a lot of problems.
Jim, I would like to advance this ordinance with the, um, continuance of that property being in the city of Asbury that was in dispute.
And I'd second that. Do you want to make that a motion, Bob?
Sure.
Well, even if you, the motion dies three to two, two of you can anytime pick up the phone or come in and talk to me, and I'd like to see this on the ordinance, or on, on the agenda. But I have a motion to second to bring this back for future discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, or nay?
Nay.
Okay, we'll bring it back after we've done our homework with the county.
Excuse me, is that three to two?
Yeah. But again, I don't need a motion majority to put something on the, you have the right for our policy, if anything be put on the agenda. If two you do, I've never denied anybody in seventeen years, a council member wanted to bring something up for discussion. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it for new business. We'll move on. Police report and GM report and park board?
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, last call for anything I previously discussed, or.
Can I just bring up, maybe I should just, that's other business.
We'll do a roundtable, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm good, I pass.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I don't zoom, and I hate this. Uh, the camera's all over the place. I can only hear some of you some of the time. I think we need to upgrade this process definitely to be used more often. I don't know if we need to be closer to the mics, if we need to have a better system that we can hear better. But the cameras fluttering all over, it's not going like I was told it was going to who was speaking or whatever. It's been showing my empty seat more than me sitting there. So I think that we need to review this process.
One thing I'd like to have us look at with the, uh, looking at adding these additional areas, having access via, uh, golf carts. Is look at our fine system. I mean, I know that we haven't had any incidents, but I would like to see just a little bit more teeth put into them. In which it's like, it's a privilege that we are, that these people are able to travel from their homes to the golf course via their own golf cart. And possibly increasing the fees from, for the second and third offenses going from, I think the initial one was two hundred or one hundred, and then maybe taking the second offense up to five hundred, and then thousand for a third offense. Again, we don't have to let them be able to do this. It is a privilege, and they should realize that.
All right, Russ?
I'm good.
Anything else, Beth?
Um, yeah, I just, we talked about the, uh, agreement for, uh, sharing costs with the fire department at the last meeting. You guys took the information back. I didn't hear back from anybody. I'm just asking again if, um, everything's okay, and if it is, then I will forward that information to the fire department for their, um, review and comment, and then we can get back together and, you know, talk about it.
Anything?
Sounds good.
All right, send it over. All right. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To adjourn?